It's 6:30. I hereby call this meeting to order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, in all manner, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll observe a moment of silence. Thank you. And now, at this time, before we have our presentation, I'm going to call an audible. I'm going to pull forward announcements, awards, and special recognition. We do have City Council member Mike King with us here tonight. His microphone is on, and I believe his camera is on. Good evening, Mr. King.
Good evening, Kim. How are you?
Wonderful. How are you?
Better, thank you.
Better. Glad to see you. It would appear that tonight is the last City Council meeting for Council members Phil Prebor and Mike King. So I just want us to take a minute and appreciate, first of all, the service that both Council members have provided us over many, many years. I'm going to go ahead and, I'm afraid, embarrass them. Councilmember King has served on City Council for 10 years. Three of those years, he served on the Convention and Visitors Bureau. He's been hosting and coordinating our city's Memorial Day services for five years, and he's been Mayor pro tem three times. Councilmember Phil Prebor served on City Council for eight years. He served on the 2017 SPOLOST Committee. He was on the Mayor's Needs Assessment Committee in 2012. He served on the Planning Commission for a year before he was elected, and he was Mayor pro tem twice. What has changed in Peachtree City during their tenure? Each of them has served on the Wassa Board for the last five years, where they oversaw a massive and very positive turnaround of operations and budget down at Wassa. They oversaw a new gateway bridge over 54 on the west side. They built the Macduff Parkway Bridge over the CSX Railroad. That was about three years in the making, if I remember right. We constructed an award-winning spillway at the south end of Lake Peachtree. They worked on building a new Drakefield Pavilion and created a long list of new family-oriented events that bring our community together by the thousands. They added over 50 miles of cart paths. They built the seven-acre Spyglass Island Park as a brand-new amenity in Peachtree City. They oversaw infrastructure maintenance on both roads and cart paths. They passed needed ordinances like our noise ordinance and dog tethering. Maybe they were too busy to do this one, but they approved zero new apartments and modified our zoning ordinances to restrict maximum density in general residential to preserve lot size and limit the number of units per acre in our residential neighborhoods. In addition to all that, and keep in mind, every one of those activities takes dedication, not just when you're in the public eye, but a lot of off-hours as well, over the many years. In addition to this list, Mike has been an advocate and a voice for our military community, and Phil is a business owner who bases his business here. Very few of us have been more dedicated to this city over the many, many years. Please join me in thanking them for their dedication. I wonder, Mr. King, if you would want to say a couple words. And this is a total surprise. I'm sorry to do this to you, Mike. And he's under the weather, but maybe you could, maybe you could say a few words.
First off, Kim, I would tell you that these last 10 years of the serve has been both an honor and a privilege. And I am happy to report that we are going to leave this great job, if you will, and the city in much better shape than we found it. I think Phil will agree with me that the things that you mentioned and several others, and the quality of life at Peachtree City have been enhanced. And we still have a ways to go, and I trust and pray that the future councils will build upon what we started. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Prebor?
I'll echo some of Mr. King's sentiments. It has been an honor and a privilege, and I appreciate these accolades. But you know, it's a, it's a big team up here. It's the city staff. It's citizens engaging and giving feedback, and then all of council, the city manager, the, you know, the mayor, and of course, all of us up here. And it's, it's, it's a team, and I appreciate having the honor of being a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give them one more round of applause. At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce Ms. Taylor Pessin. Go ahead and take the microphone. Taylor Pessin is a 15-year Peachtree City resident and a student at Georgia State University.
Mayor, I'm sorry. You forgot to mention the reception.
Oh, thank you. On Thursday, the 14th, next week, at 4:00 p.m., we will host a reception and a nice send-off for Councilmembers Prebor and King. And it will be in the community room here in this building downstairs in the back. So I hope you'll join us. It's a come-one, come-all. We will have a nice send-off for both, both of them, and a thank you for their 20 years-plus of service to the city. Thank you for that. Taylor Pessin is a 15-year Peachtree City resident and a student at Georgia State University, where she's majoring in Public Management and Policy and minoring in Economics. She aspires to a career in domestic policy with a focus on housing and economic security. Ms. Pessin is very passionate about our city and its future, and she is mom to cute, sweet Charlotte, who seems to enjoy coming to City Council meetings. I don't know why, but she does, and we're glad to see her. Taylor, thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, for having me. I really want to extend my gratitude to City Council for allowing me time tonight to discuss this analysis and present my findings. Especially on such a busy night, I feel honored to be included. The analysis I'm presenting this evening was completed last summer for a graduate-level course I did in Geographic Information Systems, GIS applications for public policy. I've spent the last seven years watching housing costs become more and more out of reach and have really tailored several course projects to addressing issues of housing inequity within our community. So the problem this study addresses is the lack of housing that is affordable for young adults. This is not an issue that only impacts Peachtree City, but that does not mean it's an issue that our community should continue to, or, sorry, not continue to, but should ignore or expect to correct itself. Across the U.S., housing is becoming less and less affordable due to rising interest and mortgage rates, wages failing to keep up with inflation and cost of living, and exclusionary zoning and increased construction costs, leading to a shortage of housing appropriate for low- and middle-income earners. This issue has hit millennials particularly hard as they experience rental prices more than two times higher now than they were for baby boomers when they were the same age, down payments for mortgages that are around 85% of the annual average millennial household salary, and mortgage payments, sorry, that were 76% higher in 2022 than in 2021. And most importantly, 73% of millennials are living paycheck to paycheck. This is 10% higher than Gen X and 25% higher than baby boomers, again, at the same age. Clearly, young adults are economically disadvantaged compared to previous generations. This problem deeply impacts Peachtree City and Fayette County, where we face some unique challenges. According to data from Redfin and Point Two, from December 2019 to April 2023, Peachtree City experienced a 31% increase in rental prices and a 53% increase in home prices. As discussed in Peachtree City's most recent comprehensive plan, we also have a pretty extreme job-housing imbalance resulting in heavy commuter traffic. Additionally, our local commercial and industrial enterprises face staffing issues as highlighted in a Fayette Chamber of Commerce Workforce Needs Assessment from early 2020 before COVID. In this study, business owners express fears that their lower-paying positions, which naturally face higher rates of turnover when workers have to commute, will go unfilled. And on that note, national studies show that a lack of housing affordability has been linked to increased staffing shortages and human capital development costs. Finally, our county is experiencing a demographic shift toward an older population with 25% of residents forecasted to be over 65 by 2040. That's actually a typo on the screen. I apologize. This study uses individual spatial analyses to address three main research questions based on this problem. What areas have the most and least rental stock? Where is housing most and least affordable for young adults? And where are young adults located compared to older adults? My methodology follows a typical workflow of a spatial analysis, where I begin with a literature review and investigate the problem. From there, I collect applicable data. In this case, I use Census Bureau data from the American Community Survey GIS Feature Layers and Associated Data Tables from 2017 to 2021. So that's the year range we're looking at. Next, I conduct the proper spatial analysis for each question using tools provided by ArcGIS Pro. And finally, I analyze my results, looking at the implications of my findings and potential remedies for the problem. This first spatial analysis was designed to address the question, what areas have the most and least rental stock? I used both census tract and counties as analytical units because while census tracts can more accurately represent disparity within a small geographic area, using them alone can disguise disparities between our community and those surrounding us. For this analysis, I used both density and unit count for the tract-level analysis to offer a little more context on where the largest numbers of units are. As you can see, tracts in the northern part of the county, Tyrone, Fayetteville, and Peachtree City, have higher densities of rental housing than the south and southeastern portions where Brooks and Woolsey are located. Tracts with the highest and second-highest number of units were both inside Peachtree City. These tracts have the third and second-highest densities in the county, respectively. However, out of nine census tracts that either intersect or fall within Peachtree City, five are below 20% and fall far behind the percentages in other counties. The tract with the highest density is in East Fayette County and is over 10% denser than the tract with the second-highest density. And I hypothesize that this is because of its close proximity to Clayton County, and they, you can see, have a much higher density. But that is just a hypothesis. Additionally, Fayette County has a lower density of renter-occupied housing stock than all of the surrounding counties. Here, we're about 19% for rental density, which is almost 6% lower than the next lowest county, which is Coweta, and almost 15% lower than the mean for all of the counties pictured. So this next map represents the answer to the question, where is housing most and least affordable for young adults in Peachtree City and Fayette County? For the purpose of this analysis, I've defined young adults as being between the ages of 25 and 34, and I've used the 30% housing cost-burden threshold as recommended by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Additionally, I contacted all of the local municipalities to collect data on apartment complexes within their boundaries, and I then geocoded the addresses and placed them on the map, color-coding them based on apartment complex type, which you can find in the lower legend there at the bottom. This analysis revealed that Fayette County has high concentrations of both renter and owner cost-burden for young adults. The tracts with the highest and second-highest cost-burden for renters and homeowners are either in or intersect Peachtree City. And cost-burden for renters appears to have a negative correlation with cost-burden for homeowners, especially where non-senior living apartment complexes are located. We can see that income-based apartments appear to lower cost-burden for both renters and homeowners in Peachtree City. And finally, the percentage of young adults who are rental-cost-burdened does not go beyond 77.8%, whereas the percentage of home-owning young adults in Peachtree City reaches 100% in two tracts. That means every young adult that lives in that tract is paying more than 30% of their income towards their housing costs. This final analysis focuses on where young adults are located as compared to older adults, and here, I've defined older adults as the 55- to 64-year age group, so just before general retirement age. Because looking at age-related disparities can help illustrate whether the rental stock and housing cost-burden are potentially resulting in a barrier to entry for young adults, it is, again, necessary to include surrounding counties. This analysis reveals that in 15 out of the 24 census tracts within the county, the young adult age group composes less than 10% of the population. The only census tract in Peachtree City where the older age group composes less than 10% of the population is the same one mentioned in the previous map, where the city's only income-based apartment complexes are located that are not age-restricted. Central Fayette County also has lower populations of older adults, and I hypothesize, again, that this could be due to its proximity to Trillist Studios because they're potentially dominated by Trillist and movie industry employees who are going to be generally between the ages of 36 and 50 years old. The maps of surrounding counties also suggest a disparity. For young adults, Fayette County is the only county below 10%. And older adults, and for older adults, only Fayette and Coweta County actually have over 13%, with Fayette having 2% more than Coweta. There are several implications to the results of these analyses. First, I was able to confirm that there is a lack of housing affordability for young adults and that they experience a high degree of housing cost-burden. This could potentially lead to young adults in our community seeing economic disparities I mentioned earlier in the presentations, such as living paycheck to paycheck, seeing those disparities exacerbated. Additionally, there are quality-of-life consequences for high housing cost-burden, such as financial stress, which leads to deferred medical care, higher risk for heart disease, high blood pressure, obesity, and even suicidal thoughts and behaviors. We should also consider the inequity for older adults and their young adult children, who would love to, and in my case, need to, live closer together. A lot of your children would love to locate here so that your grandchildren can enjoy the same Peachtree City lifestyle and quality of life that they grew up with, and I know a lot of you would like to see them close by, too. High housing cost-burden is also found to intensify the recruiting and hiring issues already identified in the Workforce Needs Assessment by the chamber. 30% of the jobs offered within Peachtree City are in retail and hospitality, which are industries that are dominated by workers who are both more likely to live in poverty and be young adults. Additionally, lack of housing that is affordable for these workers and workers in the industrial jobs the city is looking to attract, you know, is a deterrent for businesses that may have otherwise considered locating here. The map depicting the age disparities within the county also carries concerning economic implications because when a huge swath of the population is composed of older adults on the verge of retirement, it causes economic difficulties for the community. Jobs that they are currently filling will need to attract new workers, and retirees who have been commuting out of the city for higher-paying jobs will be consuming more within the county, leading to a need for even more of the lower-paying retail and hospitality workers. Without lowering the barriers to housing for the young adults, we need to fill these roles, the city and council, and, sorry, the city and county could be facing economic stagnation. And if not for empathy and a desire for equity, the impacts on our community economic health should be enough, in my opinion, to motivate everyone to rethink our housing policies. To close, I wish to offer a few recommendations to address the lack of housing affordability here and hopefully reverse the disparity my study revealed and avoid the looming consequences I just mentioned. To start, incorporating zoning changes that reduce large-lot zoning and allow for incremental increases in housing density can correct for the apparent disequilibrium between housing supply and demand. Additionally, I believe we need to encourage the development of smaller, single-family homes, townhomes, efficiency condos, and manufactured housing communities that are affordable for young adults. After all, if we can allow for mixed-use development of luxury-level condos, we can certainly do the same for more affordable housing options in other areas. Rethinking our policies around the long-term rental of auxiliary dwelling units, ADUs, so your mother-in-law suites, you know, garage apartments, things like that, could also be a feasible option to help address the low rental stock we saw in the first map, as well as the heightened cost-burden for both renters and owners because the rental costs will go down, and then owners are able to absorb that rent and reduce their cost-burden as well for housing. My last recommendation is conducting further research into housing affordability in this community. I would really encourage us to do more spatial analyses focusing on other age groups as well as other income levels, and if we really need to look at it by race as well. We should conduct our own specific Workforce Needs Assessment that looks at specifically Peachtree City business owners and Peachtree City workers. We budgeted for a housing stock study for $75,000 in our most recent comprehensive plan, and I firmly believe that we should execute that. And then, these assessments altogether would create an even better understanding of housing in Peachtree City and lead to more effective rezoning policies that can allow for development fitting the needs of young adults and other excluded groups. So these are the sources, three pages of sources that I used for this analysis, and I would be happy to provide a copy of my report to anyone interested. I'll leave my business card somewhere in case I have to jet out early to get this one to bed. But I really appreciate everyone's time and attention this evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present my work, and do you guys have any questions?
Counsel? It's a lot to take in.
It is.
Thank you for the detail. It seems to me to be a master's-level analysis, and the sources and reference are, of course, impressive. I want to tell everybody that this report in its entirety is in our council packet, and that's available through our city website.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. Public comment?
Yes, we have one person sign up to speak. However, we are going to ask just some housekeeping. There are some seats available on the other side of the room. If anyone would like to sit down, anyone against the wall.
Don't be shy.
Yes. Additionally, if everyone can please place their cellphones on silent mode. If you have a pager, you can also, I'm just joking. I mean, unless you have a pager. No, the final thing is that during the presentations, during the public hearing, and during the comments, if you all have any additional comments that are not related or while the council members are talking, if you don't mind stepping out into the hallway, as you have already been advised, we do have a council member online, and there are also people watching it, and these mics are all live, and sometimes they're unable to hear. So if you all need to have any sidebar conversations, again, if that could just be taken out in the hallway. Thank you. The first, only person signed up to speak, excuse me, is Joseph Smith.
Hi. I just wanted to remind us and remember December 7, 1941, a day that will live in infamy. And all the, between 16 and 19 million Americans who went overseas to save the world from socialism, and over 430,000 of them died, gave the ultimate sacrifice, and untoned millions came home scarred, probably all of them, came home scarred and with physical and mental disabilities because of their service to this country. And so we should remember these people who sacrificed for us so we can maintain the freedoms that we have and the goodness of our Constitution and our Declaration of Independence. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda changes? Counsel? Hearing none. Minutes, November 16, 2023, regular meeting minutes. November 16, 2023, executive session minutes. Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November 16, regular meeting minutes, and November 16, executive session minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Mr. King. All opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda, and yes, I have to read these into the record. A, Budget Amendment Fiscal Year 2023. B, Budget Amendment Fiscal Year 2024. C, Award Contract for Pension Investment Advisor. D, Municipal Attorney Services Terms of Appointment. E, Replacement of Vehicle 22007 Fire Department. F, List of Roadways Approved for Speed Detection Devices Update 2023. G, Replacement of Isuzu NPR Flatbed Vehicle Sign Shop. H, Replacement of F-250 Vehicle for Grounds. I, Replacement of 750 Dump Truck, that's in the 2023 SPOLOST. And finally, Purchase of an Asphalt Spreader 2023 SPOLOST. Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda items A through J as read. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Old agenda items, 112303, variance request for 100 Huddleston Road Sign Height for Caliber Car Wash.
Okay, so this item was, the public hearing for this item was held at the last council meeting. And so there is no public hearing on this item, but just to refresh your memory, we are talking about the new car wash that is located at the intersection, section of Huddleston and 54, highlighted here in the yellow. And the request is for a sign variance, which has different criteria than a zoning or land-use variance. They are a multi-frontage lot. This map shows 54 up there, and then Huddleston running in there. They do sit about 18 and 1/2 feet below the grade of 54, and because it is a corner lot, they are permitted to have two monument signs. They do already have one on Huddleston, and they're requesting some, a variance to the sign height for the one that they would like to erect along 54. They've provided us with a visualization of what it would potentially appear, as you can see here, and the notation shows a 26-foot height request. And I do believe the representative for the applicant is here for any follow-up questions that you may have following our discussion.
Would the applicant care to share a comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Rick Lindsey, again, for Caliber Car Wash. At the last time, this was before the council, I had asked if council would allow us to withdraw or request a continuance. There was some discussion of a sign litigation that's going on that the city's involved in, and what would the expansion or improvement of a Highway 54, 74 intersection, what kind of impacts that might have on this property. what kind of impacts that might have on this property. I discussed those matters with my client following the meeting. He was not here that night. I'd been given authorization to request a continuance. I talked to Ted to find out really what was going on with the litigation. You never know. You got to get on court calendar and whatever else, hoping, I guess, some movement in early twenty twenty-four. I expressed that or described that to my client. So we're requesting a three month continuance to date certain if council would entertain that.
Three months?
Three months. And I think we have to do a date certain for a continuance.
Do we need a? To a specific date?
Madam Mayor, can I make a motion to continue this item for ninety days or is it three months?
I would do it to the second meeting in March.
To the second meeting in March.
Can we do that the first meeting in March? I'll be out of town. I already know that.
You care to amend your motion?
I'll amend that to be the first meeting of the month of March twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Clint. Appreciate that.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. New agenda items, we have none. Public hearings. A, twelve twenty-three zero-one rezoning for eleven oh-two Macduff Parkway from AR Agricultural Reserve to LUR Limited Use Residential. Mr. Stephen Jones is here this evening, but we'll turn it over to staff.
Protocol. When the public hearing is opened, members of council will become hearers. No action on their part is in order until the mayor declares the hearing complete. First, city staff will present the request and provide an assessment of compliance with the city code. The mayor will then allow up to ten minutes for speakers on each side of the issue to present evidence. No individual member of the public will be given more than five minutes to speak. Time limits may only be extended by a majority vote of council and will be divided equally between those supporting and those opposing the issue. The mayor will recognize the applicant and those supporting the issue to present evidence. Remarks will be limited to a total of ten minutes. The mayor will then recognize those opposing the issue to present evidence for up to ten minutes. Prior to closing the public hearing, city staff and the public will be given the opportunity to ask questions of either or both sides of the issue. When the mayor and council are assured that the presentation of evidence is complete, the public hearing shall be ended, and the council may then debate the issue and render a decision. All speakers from the public are asked to follow these rules. One, please wait to be recognized by the mayor. Two, come to the microphone and state your name and neighborhood prior to making remarks. Three, keep individual remarks under five minutes and do not repeat comments. And four, address all comments to the mayor. Thank you.
Okay, so on your screen is a map, a zoning map of the property outlined in yellow. We are located in the northwestern, most northwestern area of the city. Off of Macduff is the nearest road access. This property was, through the state legislation, legislature, was de-annexed from Tyrone and annexed into Peachtree City at the beginning of this year. And as a result of our ordinance, says it has to come in as AR, which stands for Agricultural Reserve. The request is to rezone the property to allow up to forty-three townhomes, which would connect to the subdivision on the south, which is now called Collier Hills. This property was rezoned to townhomes previously, and so they would be carrying the road that was already approved into this new development. Just remind you where it is. So this property to the south has already been rezoned for townhomes, and the only access to this property is there, and they're asking to continue that zoning. They are carrying the zoning conditions that were placed on the property to the south. They're carrying those forward on this property, putting a hundred foot buffer between the townhomes and the rear property and their property line, and a fifty foot buffer along the railroad. Just a reminder of our consideration, what we have to look at. We'll go, I'll be talking about how this complies with the policy intent of the land use, but also whether or not the property is compatible with surrounding land use and has economic vitality as it's currently zoned. So because this property came into the city after our comprehensive plan was adopted, it doesn't have a designation on the future land use map. It is surrounded by a category called single family cluster. Brief history on this, this category was created in the ninety-five plan. At that time, it had up to twelve dwelling units per acre. And then subsequently in the twenty seventeen plan, that was lowered down to what it is now, which is three to six dwelling units per acre. So if you were to consider that an acceptable designation for this property, the request does meet that density requirement. Other things that we have to look at is whether or not it meets other policies of the comp plan. First is to offset dense residential developments with green belts, parks, and civic plazas. They are providing, as mentioned, that hundred foot buffer adjacent to Crestwind, which has its own fifty foot buffer, so this would be a total of a hundred and fifty feet between the rear property lines and the townhomes. Another policy is to encourage the use of high quality building materials. Staff has recommended in your report that the homes be a hundred percent brick or stone on the front and side. The applicant did discuss this at the planning commission meeting and requested that it not be a hundred percent, but that it be the same requirement of the, which is placed on the homes to the south, the townhomes to the south. And another policy we look at is encouraging housing to include aging and place elements. And this would be satisfied if the staff recommended condition of requiring that at least fifty percent of the homes have ground level bedrooms or a flex room or even an elevator shaft so that somebody could easily convert should they decide to age in place there. The planning commission held their public hearing at November twenty-seventh, and many of the public stood up, as well as the commissioners, and listed some issues that they had. Concern over loss of the existing trees on the site, additional traffic added to Parkway, Macduff Parkway, concern over stormwater runoff. The location close to the rail is a concern, especially about with some recent train derailments that have happened across the country, and some concern over loss of privacy for the existing homes in Crestwind. The planning commission recommended denial, five zero, stating some of their reasons, such as desire for fewer units or a lower density at the city edge. So these are the conditions that are included in your report. Many of these are standard LUR zoning conditions that we carry on all of the LURs in the area, but it does require conformance with the provided plan. There's that fifty percent of the home plants being aging in place. Some of those same setbacks from the south, parking. There's that hundred percent brick and stone facade that they'd like to reconsider. There's the fifty foot buffer and a hundred foot buffer that they're showing on the plan. This zoning condition, when put in place, would make sure that they comply with it and that all the streets be built to city standards, and the HOA should be required to maintain those. The applicant is here, and I believe they have the same presentation that they gave to the planning commission.
Mayor?
Counsel?
My name is Stephen Jones, the law firm Taylor and Schumah, here today on behalf of the applicant, Brent Holdings. What you have before you is an application for phase two of the Collier Hills subdivision. As staff pointed out, this is a continuation of a property development which was owned back in twenty twenty-two, July, I believe. Just to rehash, you'll see here, this is again phase two, which connects to that property to the south, which staff highlighted. It's already owned LUR. You'll see the train tracks running right here to the east side of the subdivision and Macduff Parkway here. Again, the only access is through the already zoned LUR subdivision or LUR development, which is permitted for development of thirty townhomes. That's why we are calling this phase two of the Collier Hills subdivision. We will carry throughout that subdivision the same design style, the same building materials, all the same conditions which were imposed on phase one through phase two. You can see the zoning map here. As staff noted, your code provides that upon annexation, if there is not a zoning district assigned to the property, the property is automatically zoned AR. That's why the AR zoning district is applied to this property. Again, you'll see the LUR twenty to the south. Phase one, in July twenty twenty-two, zoned LUR. You may be familiar with the existing curb cut off Macduff Parkway over the bridge, which was mentioned previously in this meeting, over the, I believe, CSX rail line. And you'll see, we also contemplated at that time the connection to the property to the north. On that, on the twenty twenty-two rezoning, there were conditions regarding buffers along both the western side and the eastern side. Those exact same buffer conditions are carried forward in staff's proposed conditions that you heard earlier in staff's recitation of the staff report. They're also in your agenda packet. You'll see here the combined concept of phase one and phase two with the road running through. Again, it is a continuation of the phase one with, I call it ditto, right? Same thing that was in phase one in phase two. There are actually additional conditions added into this rezoning, which were not present for the planning commission and not present on this one, which is addition on phase one, I mean. The addition of additional parking spots, which we're fine with. The combination of building materials, which staff graciously included to be consistent with the phase one. Sidewalks provided throughout on both sides of the road. A landscape plan, as well as specimen tree survey. The applicant consents to and supports all of staff's recommended conditions. This next slide will give you a zoom in of the phase two concept plan. You'll see that road continuing here, and you'll note from the concept, through phase one is the only viable access to this property. It has no other way to connect to a public road system. That's why we would posit to you that one of the zoning conditions that staff, one of the zoning criteria set out in your zoning ordinance and set out under state common law for evaluation of rezoning applications is whether the property has an economically viable use as presently zoned. Because of the access, because of the limited access through phase one, and its zoning as AR, and the limited uses of a partial zoned AR within the city, it does not have a reasonably economically viable use as presently zoned. You'll see on the east side of the property, that's the hundred foot buffer that's referenced in your conditions. On, it was on the west side, and on the east side, you'll see the fifty foot buffer along the railroad right of way. Again, those are consistent with what was done in phase one. Another condition that staff imposed, which the applicant consents to, and which is consistent with phase one, is an evergreen tree line running along the proposed buffer. Give you a slightly more zoomed in version of this plan. You'll see the townhomes on each side. This is a lift station for sewer. And to the south is a child's playground. Again, phase one, phase two, we would like this to be a continuation of phase one, one cohesive neighborhood developed in similar style with, similar style dwellings. So I'd like to address during my time in opening or in direct the concerns which were raised before the planning commission. Some of those concerns, the noise from the existing train track was one concern that we heard. The, two things. Number one, as a noise buffer, there are really three components here. Number one is the tree line that will remain in the hundred foot buffer here, the addition of the evergreen row of trees. And then thirdly, is the construction of the townhomes themselves in phase one and phase two. If you have any sort of auditory screen, structures provide the greatest auditory screen over vegetation. So you've got three components there which address that concern. There's a concern about stormwater runoff expressed. This development, as with all developments in the state of Georgia, have to comply with state law, which mandates that you retain and control stormwater on the property so that you do not affect other, lower topographically set properties. And that's state law, and that will be handled at the time of construction plans and engineered drawings during the land disturbance permitting process. Additional, there was a concern about additional traffic on Macduff Parkway. Again, this is an addition of forty-three homes. There was a traffic study which staff referenced in the planning commission meeting, which contemplated development of the entire Macduff Parkway. And we believe that that study adequately addressed the traffic concerns expressed. So with all of these criteria, with the zoning factors set out under state law and in your ordinance, we would show that although this property doesn't have a future land use map designation assigned to it, the future land use map designations of all the surrounding areas are consistent with this zoning proposed. Secondly, as I discussed earlier, the AR designation, given the limited access of this property and its connection only through phase one, does not provide the owner or the applicant with an economically viable use of the property. For those reasons, we would ask that you vote consistent with the zoning of phase one approximately eighteen months ago, and zone phase two consistent with the conditions proposed by staff. Thank you so much. And if you have any questions, be happy to address those now or during the question and answer portion of your public hearing.
Thanks. We'll move into the public hearing. Thanks very much. Before I open the public hearing, can I see a show of hands of people who might be inclined to speak in favor? Can I see, thank you, can I see a show of hands of people who may be inclined to speak in opposition? Okay, thank you, just to give me some idea. At this point, I will open the public hearing. Yes?
Mayor, I know it has been done in the past. If you all would like to make a motion to extend time, that might be better to do it ahead of schedule.
All right.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we extend the time because of the number of people that are going to be speaking tonight, and I don't know how much time that is.
How about five extra minutes per side? We're looking at fifteen minutes per side.
Five, so we'll go to ten minutes?
It's at ten.
At ten, so now we'll go to fifteen.
Correct.
Okay, for fifteen additional minutes. That's the motion.
Fifteen minutes per side. That's five additional.
Okay.
Okay. Second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion?
Yes, so if we get to that point and we haven't heard, everybody, can we extend it again?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. If you wish to speak in favor, please find your way to the microphone.
Please state your name.
My name is Ed Markwitz. My wife and I bought our home in the Crestwind subdivision following our retirement four and a half years ago. And I spoke in favor of phase one at the council meeting about a year and a half ago. So it is nice to see everyone again. The, really, the only reason for my being here tonight is that in the packet, I did not see a couple of ideas relevant that I thought had been adopted as conditions for phase one that I thought were good ideas. And one was that the privacy barriers between the townhomes and the railroad be soundproofed. And I think that was adopted, but I also thought it was a good idea and it should be extended to phase two as well. The other that I recall pretty clearly is that there was an additional condition developed during the council meeting to limit rentals or leases in the phase one to no more than twenty-five percent. I also thought that was a good idea. And so I would just like to encourage counsel, should you approve phase two, to include those two conditions along with your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Please find your way to the microphone.
Teresa Smith, and I'm a resident in Crestwind. I want to talk about traffic, safety, and the comprehensive plan primarily. Pond Company performed a traffic study, which I believe is not the same one that was referenced, at the intersection of Macduff, Red Maple, and Highlock, based on traffic data that was collected on February 22nd, 2023, so less than a year ago. Based on the timing of the study, the traffic, the safety and engineering impact of this new development would not be included, obviously. Nothing's been started there. The daily vehicular volume on Macduff was 7,585. Red Maple volume was 975. And the growth rate was calculated at 5.49%, with the study noting, quote, "This is a highly aggressive growth rate due to residential developments along Macduff, Red Maple, and Highlock Drive." That growth continues. In order to reduce delays and crash risks at the intersections, the safety recommends implementing a restricted crossing U-turn, AKA R-cut configuration, which may require significant modification from the Sonoya Road West on Macduff to include both of these intersections. The complete study is available through engineering, obviously. This single access entry and exit to this new development is just off Sonoya Road on the railroad bridge that's been mentioned twice, on the hill, and a very short distance from both, from the Wilksmore and Crestwind intersection. It's already very difficult during morning hours and after school, after work, to enter or exit from the subdivisions. There are significant safety concerns there now, and a new entrance, potentially several hundred additional cars, that close, in that close proximity, is concerning to us. We also believe that the new fire station that is planned for Macduff, that's only a few hundred feet away, needs to be considered as well. We request that you do a traffic study based on adding the new entrance and the resulting additional traffic and safety impact for residents. Also, the Peachtree City Comprehensive Plan makes several references to protecting the residential character of established and single-family neighborhoods. The plan calls for utilizing step-down residential density, which during the planning discussion, the Planning Commission discussions, was certainly raised as an issue in that this is on the outer side, that it would be much more appropriate close to a city center. The plan encourages for preservation of existing trees and requiring new tree plantings and tree replacement plantings, particularly for trees with long lifespans. There are many very mature, large, beautiful hardwood trees on this property that we're talking about. Those trees provide Crestwind homeowners along Hazel Nut and Silver Bell Court a buffer from the railroad and from Sonoya Road traffic. The trees in the green space are also habitats for wildlife and birds. The proposed plan suggests destroying a significant portion of the natural habitat and the buffer, and replacing it with what was referred to during the Planning Commission meetings and again this evening as, quote, "A row of trees." That's one row. Even replanting, it would take decades before any trees that would be replanted would be anywhere close to the kinds of hardwoods that are there now. The staff report included in the packet indicates that the development selling townhomes in the, in the mid-400s range is below the break-even point of 571,000 per home to cover the cost of providing city services. While the developer has said they intend to sell townhomes in the mid-400s, they've also mentioned multiple times that the market will drive that and those prices may have to decrease. That would further increase the gap, making the responsibility on the city and taxpayers even wider. In summary, I appreciate your consideration and request that you deny the rezoning request as was recommended unanimously by the Planning Commission. If you do not recommend, if you do not deny it, please delay your decision until a comprehensive traffic and safety study can be done for the residents already in the area, and you can make the determination of whether this really meets the criteria for the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Is there, no, no. Excuse me, excuse me. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Yes.
I stand before you as an old person.
If you could share your name and address for me.
Wayne Sellers in Crestwind, and I'm still an old person. Crest, I'm gonna give you a character of our community. Crestwind is an over 55 community. There are so many like me, so I'm not the only old person. We are a peaceful, quiet community with an occasional annoying grandchild visiting. We have been productive, hard-working, successful citizens. We have earned our rights to old-age comfort. Many of our residents are military veterans, some with wartime service, such as myself. We even have a veterans' club. Our community consists of 734 single-family homes. Our beautiful community has sidewalks throughout where many of our residents walk their dogs and walk themselves. Crestwind has a beautiful clubhouse that hosts numerous clubs and activities. We have an indoor pool, an outdoor pool, and a nature trail. Peachtree City's planned communities with beautiful trees, green spaces, and parks are just a few of the things that brought us to Crestwind and Peachtree City. We never envisioned a multi-level row of townhomes with a 25% rental rate, destroying 50- to 75-year-old hardwood trees and animal habitat, crammed in between a railroad track and our back porches. You've probably heard buffers mentioned a lot. Keep in mind, a 50-foot buffer is the length of a school bus. You can walk that in 15 seconds. A 150-foot buffer obviously is three school buses. Further Peachtree City, I won't say this one because she just covered it, the traffic safety study. There are times during the day that that bumper-to-bumper, barely-moving traffic extends from Sonoya Road to past Crestwind. Due to the age of Crestwind residents, we are more likely to need emergency medical and EMS services. Many lives are lost or saved in mere seconds. The traffic congestion in this location could mean the difference in life or death of a loved one. The highest priority of any government is the safety and welfare of its citizens. This development does not fit in with the neighborhood character that I described of our homes and Wilksmore homes across the street. I urge you to deny this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition?
Madam Mayor, I'm David Freeman, a Crestwind resident. And what I have to say is more of a question. In the last meeting where we looked at the plan for the townhomes, and again tonight, there's the discussion of the railroad. I decided I'd do a little reading about railroads, and here's what I discovered. A study by the National Railroad Federation pointed out that in 2022, 1,100 people were killed by trains while trespassing on railroad tracks. A study that was done in 2017, the only one I could find specifically dedicated to children, pointed out that a child is killed by a train every five days in the United States. So the question I have is what is the developer going to do to guarantee that children will not play on that railroad track? I remember that I used to do that. I was raised down here in Barnesville, Georgia. We crushed pennies. We lost two children doing that. So I'm concerned, and I noticed you've got a playground built, so obviously you're anticipating the children are going to be in these houses. Again, what are you going to do to guarantee that children are not going to play on that railroad track?
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council member. My name is Joseph Quimby. I live in Crestwind. Just to tag on there about train safety and the design as presented by the developer today, that playground for children is only 50 feet from the railroad track, as indicated today. 50 feet, one school bus. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition?
My name is Nancy Steptoe. I live in Crestwind. One of the items that came up in the Planning Commission meeting, and I was attending that, they mentioned that the emergency vehicle access to the second area was outside of the current limits that are set by city standards. I didn't hear anything this evening that addressed that. The other thing I'm concerned about is the retention pond. The developer indicates the land is pretty level. That is not the case. It is quite varied in topography, and I would be concerned about how that retention pond is built and how the, the level of quality of that build, because at where they, they seem to indicate it is right now, if it ever fails, it would flood out half a dozen houses in Crestwind. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition?
Suzanne Brown. I live in Crescent Oak. If you rezone this, you'll be approving a townhouse to be just 120 feet from the railroad tracks. What auditory buffer is there for the people in the townhouses? You can build a fence, but that will never stop 100 tons of a tank car that is 50 to 60 feet long from ending up in the living room of a townhouse. If it derails, and we know that they do. There used to be a negative connotation to being from the wrong side of the tracks. These townhouses are almost on the tracks. The noise and vibration from the daily trains will do serious damage to every building's construction as it gets vibrated apart. Slabs in patios will crack, every joint will loosen. Now let's talk about the high-tension wires that run through the west part of the lower parcel. To get to the second parcel, you must go under the wires. Half the houses will be within a few feet of the high-voltage lines, and the other half only a few feet further away. Is this what Peachtree City has to resort to for housing? Living under power lines? This parcel was supposed to be general industrial property. That's the best use for it. Housing is the worst. The developer is putting a 100-foot buffer on the Crestwind side, but only 50-foot on the railroad track side. That's because the railroad tracks cannot complain, but the Crestwind residents obviously can. This proposal lacks adequate parking for the residents, no less their visitors, contractors, delivery vehicles, et cetera. Where will the mailboxes be? Where will the children play? On the tracks? There are no real front yards, side yards, or backyards. This is not age-restricted housing. A top lot is insufficient when no house has any play area. If housing density is supposed to be lower as you approach the city boundary, then how does this council justify this? We have no obligation to a developer to allow him to maximize his potential profit. We do have an obligation to show concern for the health and welfare of the future residents who cannot possibly be here to object to this development. Turn this down and tell them to come back with a plan that takes out the, takes out the housing closest to the tracks, puts in a recreation space for the kids, adds extra parking, adds sidewalks, and shows where the mailboxes will be placed, and also increases all the setbacks. Otherwise, leave it zoned AR. The AR zoning is actually economically feasible and viable, not just in the way that the developer prefers. Support the traditions of your land use plan and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Joseph Smith, Summit Walk, Summit Walk in Summit subdivision. I'm speaking as a taxpayer, Peachtree City. All this will add extra cost to the city budget because you've got to maintain the roads, sewers, and there's that lift station, which are very expensive. And the other thing is considering fire and police, the people who live in that subdivision, how are the fire and police going to get there in a timely manner, especially when rental property has, traditionally has a higher crime rate? So it'll be a higher need for speedy response. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, I'm Jill Clark, Crestwind. And I've just had a question. I don't know if you can answer it in this setting right now, but, you know, I got to thinking that the first townhomes were approved, 43, I believe, approved?
30.
30? Okay. And those were approved, and then more, they came back for more. And it's like, did they get the first ones through, so they came back for the brass ring? Or, you know, I don't really understand that, but they didn't get sent through the first time, and I don't understand. Okay. I just wanted to make that point.
Excuse me. Would you speak into the microphone? Pick the microphone up?
Yes, I'm pretty loud, so I'm sorry. Anyway, I guess what, you know, we're listening to, all of us who are opposed to this, and you guys have done a great job. Thank you. And we look to you to do what's best for Peachtree City. And we all have an investment here, and we have to depend on you to do what's best for us. And I think this vote will tell us, you know, if you're going to do what's best for us, we just deny this. We are imploring you, please deny this. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I hereby close the public hearing. Oh, I see one.
I'll be fast. Hi, I'm Ann Kautz from Crestwind. The, the, Ann Kautz. Ann Kautz, Crestwind?
Thank you.
It just seems odd that the developer went, I don't know, we get, that AR gets brought into Peachtree City and now the...
Your time has expired. Thank you for your comment.
Please just finish your comment.
Okay. But now the developer's coming back in, and it just seems like there's a little something, I don't know, I can't, I mean, it just seems a little weird, this developer seems a little weird. And that's just my opinion.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I hereby close the public hearing, council.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I have some comments. Mr. Jones, you weren't here when this originally came up. I was, and I remember Nana Holdings, and I remember Brent Scarborough. He wasn't here, but he had a representative like you have. And I specifically asked, are you coming in and asking for more? Because I recognize a long time ago that there was obviously more opportunities here when you looked at the shape of this initial piece of land. And I was told repeatedly, no. This is all we're going to come and get. And yet, soon as you got through the first piece, you came in and asked for a second piece. I even called Nana Holdings because I wanted to know from her if they were going to sell anymore, if they had any more people that were looking for more property. And they were told, no, I was told no. So I thought that, well, the owner of the property wasn't looking to sell anymore, and neither was the developer. And yet, they came back and came up for more. So I don't have any trust at all that you're not going to come back for a bigger piece of the pie. Some of the things that have been said here, I have a lot of concern with, not only just the proximity to the railroad, which is obviously a concern, the elevation for the detention pond, which is really, as one of your representatives here spoke about, the elevation is quite high. I've driven around that property and looked at it.
Mr. Dastadio, direct your comments to the mayor. We'll have a council discussion.
Thank you, ma'am. The elevation is quite high. I would be as concerned as the representative that got up and spoke, that if there was a problem, it would definitely drain down into the housing, housing there. There's a lot of safety concerns, obviously. When we, when the Planning Commission, I was on the Planning Commission when the first bit of these houses came up, and safety has always been a concern because of the one-way in and one-way out of Crestwind's period, let alone now that we've added more houses to this area. So I think safety is definitely a concern. Traffic is a concern. Multiple problems associated with just going in and out of Crestwind's. So I really feel that there's a lot of concerns here. I don't really have...
I don't really have the concern where this is the only way that the developer's going to be able to make any money on this particular piece of property. I know that several of the council members have that concern, not, not expressed...
You haven't talked to me about anything, Frank. I don't want to be one of the ones you've said, I don't know what the concerns are.
I agree, Phil. I've not talked to you about anything.
Thank you.
But I have, over the time that I've been on the council, several council members have expressed concern over the value of the property, not this property, but other properties. We should allow the developer to make money on his property. And I've, I've agreed with you on different times. The developer should, when he has a piece of property, he should be able to make some money on his property. In this case, I don't feel that way on this. So that's, that's one of my concerns. I think the townhomes are going to be multi-story, are they not, Mr. Jones?
Yes, councilman.
I, I just don't think that we want to see multi-story townhomes in Peachtree City either. So that's a concern that I have. Obviously, noise and the water, I've already spoken about. So those are the reasons that I would, I would vote to deny this, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. King, I don't want to forget that you're out there. Do you have any comments you wish to share?
Yes, I do. And I realize that this property, the only way we can get to it is from the south. I also know that eighteen months ago, we had the state legislature allow the city, allow the city of Tyrone to de-annex it so we could annex. We have annexed it. As, as it normally comes in, in agricultural residential, don't really remember what it was within Tyrone, but that's what it is right now. Every time I think about forty-three townhome at, near a, a railroad track, the, the city of East Palestine just keeps coming back, the pictures of it. It's on a curve, it's on a major railroad commercial line. And in this case, this is probably one of the very few instances where I would probably, I would decide to stay with the current designation of AR, because I know that some other things can be done. Now, if the developer would decide he would like to perhaps reduce the number, or perhaps the size, or the proximity of these, these townhomes from the railroad track, I'd like to hear it again. But right now, as it stands, I can't vote for it.
Thank you, sir. Council, any other comments?
No, you go ahead and go. Yeah, so, we've, we've been presented with this. Right off the bat, I'm not in favor of it. The emergency vehicles, the wires, the railroad, the buffers, the traffic. But I think as a city, we need to figure out what we do want. And I, I task the, going forward, the, the planning commission, when something's brought before, maybe to look at workshops, because something's going to go there. Now, somebody mentioned industrial. If anybody's ever been over there, industrial services, there's a, there's a refinery over on Dividend. I think the last thing you'd want in Crestwind is a refinery next door. So I think that the planning commission should figure out a way to meet with the members of, residents of Crestwind and come up with something that people can, can agree upon. I'm, I'm definitely not in favor, favor of it. Now, I'm going to throw a wrench into things, because, full disclosure, we have this process of a public hearing so that we hear all sides before we make any kind of decision. Now, one of us, and I'll, I'll let that person address it, one of us sent an email to somebody saying that they were against it before this presentation. And going forward, that's just not how this process is supposed to work. And I have no other comment.
Thank you. And before we go on, Mr. Meeker, could you comment on the AR zoning and, you know, any kind of future amendments to something less dense?
Do you want me to do that now, or, I know Mr. Holland hasn't spoken, if I don't...
Sure. Mr. Holland, you want to share a comment?
Is that okay, Mayor?
Sure.
Mayor? Okay. Basically, I'm looking at this and saying, you know, I heard traffic studies, I heard railroad studies, I heard AR zoning. I mean, these are all good things that need to be done if you're going to develop that area. Putting forty-three additional townhomes in there is way too much density, which is one of the things that we're supposed to not do as we get to the edge of our city. And guess what? We're at the edge of our city. So unfortunately, those things are certainly something that is near and dear to me. Let's follow the land plan. Additionally, Madam Mayor, you know, we have a wonderful planning commission. I sat in on those meetings, and I'm sure you watched them or sat in on them. They do a very good job of going into, digging into the details. And they have voted this thing down and denied it five to zero. I, I don't want to go against them. I don't want to go against the planning commission, who we put into that position to do a good job for the city. And for that reason, I'm not in favor of this.
Thank you. Mr. Meeker?
Let me start by saying one thing, and that is, I'm not advocating for rezoning of the property to the one requested by the applicant. I know the AR designation by its nature is a holding designation. There are other less intense residential uses that might be considered tonight, or council can vote to approve or vote to deny. But there, I'm just looking at the zoning map in the surrounding area. There's R forty-three, there's R twelve, there is an ER over, off of Leachur Trail. There immediately, or not immediately, there's an LUR seventeen and LUR twelve across Sonoy Road. There are GR fours designations going down seventy-four. I guess that's Arden Lee, and there's another subdivision over there. That was just something I wanted to throw out for council. I don't know, I know we had one person speak in terms of whether the property was viable for a use under AR. I don't know whether that's true or untrue. I have not explored that concept. But I know how it was brought in and what the AR zoning classification says, and there are less dense residential zoning classifications that could at least be considered.
Thank you.
I know the applicant probably wouldn't want those, but I'm telling you that this board could consider that.
It could be considered in the future.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Yeah, I would echo the comments that the council members have shared, that our citizens have shared. Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor?
I make a motion that we deny, excuse me, on public hearing twelve twenty-three oh one, we deny the rezoning for eleven oh two Macduff Parkway from AR Agricultural Reserve to LUR Limited Youth Residential.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of the denial say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Public hearing. Public hearing, twelve twenty-three oh two, variance request for three one nine Sandalin Lane for existing rear setback encroachment.
Here we go. Do you want me to go ahead? Want me to go ahead?
Sure.
Okay. So this may look familiar to this board and to maybe some of our frequent flyers. This property is located sort of in the north central area of the city. You can see it's a lot at the end of a cul-de-sac, highlighted in yellow here. And the homeowners have lived in the property for a couple of decades, and, and on that is a, a deck that they came in and requested a building permit to repair this deck. And when they did that, the survey shows that the deck encroaches into the rear setback by one foot, one point two feet. And so they are asking for a variance for that one point two feet to allow them to reconstruct their deck. If the city council does approve the request, staff does not have any additional recommended conditions.
Thank you. Can I get a motion? We'll get a motion in a second and see if there's any further discussion.
I make a motion, Madam Mayor, that this be approved?
I'm sorry, ma'am. This is the public hearing.
Oh, my goodness. I am so sorry. I thought we did it last time and got through all that.
Yes, we have, we have another one tonight, yes.
I was ready to go. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I hereby close the public hearing. Council?
Nobody.
That's okay.
I think that, Madam Mayor?
Sir?
May I? I think that we discussed this last time, and I know we kicked the can down the road, so to speak. And I know after looking at all of this and taking into account that we really do need to take care of our citizens, when there's one foot, two inches on a brand-new deck they're going to put in, I would approve that type of variance to help the homeowners because they're going to, the value of their property is going to go up, and so are the surrounding values of the property. So I would certainly be in favor of it.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
Go ahead, Frank.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the variance at three twelve, three nineteen Sandalin Lane for existing setback and the encroachment.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Public hearing twelve twenty-three oh three, annexation and rezoning for fifty-two acres located on Stagecoach Road and Spear Road from AR in unincorporated Fayette County to ER and LUR in Peachtree City.
I know you all are aware, but to those who may be seeing this for the first time, it is not the first time that the city council has actually heard this item. The property is located on the northeast side of the city, shown here in blue, right adjacent to the Booth, new Booth Middle School. And they came before the planning commission and the city council back in August, to which point they had changed the plan, and so you remanded it back to the planning commission. The planning commission held a second public hearing on the item, and at that meeting, they did recommend another, or a second denial, five-zero. The request, as a reminder to everybody, so there, there's the school, this is Spear Road running right through there, and this is Stagecoach. Now, Stagecoach pavement ends right about where that green marker is. They are proposing to continue that pavement on and then create a neighborhood road for two large lots. And then, off of Spear Road, they would have a single cul-de-sac road come in with twenty-one lots, and then that fine black line up there is a car path connection. Briefly, the surrounding property is, is zoned AR in the county, which is a five-acre minimum. Surrounding properties in the city are ER, which is a three-acre minimum, and there are some smaller lots, two-acre lots, one-and-a-half-acre lots in the LUR. The future land use, again, in the county, we are in a tributary of Camp Creek, and therefore they're quite a bit of environmental land, but they're calling for three-acre lot sizes. It would be served by county water, private septic, and the police and fire have indicated no significant impact to current service levels. The roads, as required by our ordinance, would be built by the developer to city standards as would be the paths. And one of the discussion points was their, their submitted plan does not have the environmentally sensitive lands pulled out. They have since submitted a map that I'll show at the end that pulls those out to be separately platted and dedicated to an HOA or the city. The low-density residential of some type, something one acre or larger, would be compatible. And there's that aging-in-place condition, again, with some ground-level bedrooms and bathrooms. We did, because it's an annexation, we look at the impacts onto the budget, amongst other things. And you can see here, the average annual, kind of what we call the break-even cost is about five hundred and seventy thousand, and these homes will, are planned to exceed that. And these are the conditions that were discussed previously. I did want to bring up out that staff is still recommending a fifty-foot buff, buffer along the west side of the LUR subdivision road, where it abuts two oh nine. The applicant has instead requested a twenty-foot, and they have submitted this plan, which I've asked them to speak to, which shows a twenty-foot buffer, and that would be in this area right here. So this is a public hearing, but the applicant and his representatives are here.
Thank you. Would the applicant wish to share some comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Rick Lindsey, here on behalf of Hyde Park Properties. As Robin stated, we've been here several times before, so I'm not going to go through all of the details of this. Happy to do so if council wants me to. But I'm glad Robin left the revised plan up, and I believe, I can't remember if I said this before, the council or the planning commission, unfortunately, the civil engineer, the planner who was working on, landscape planner was working on this, passed away during the middle of all of this. And so we couldn't bring a revised plan when we presented it the last time. Now we have that. So as Robin said, this is the, the latest proposal. We have listened to the comments made by citizens, and then made by the planning commission members and by council. The green area is the environmentally sensitive area. I'll call it the nature area. It's about twelve acres. Our proposal is that we dedicate that twelve acres to the city so it becomes public property. If the city council wants to have a nature trail included in that area, much like Lion Creek, we're happy to do that. That's that thin green line that's running kind of vertically in the darker green area. And that's just an idea of like where it could be. Right at the tail end of that, at the southern end, you'll see a little wider, like a twenty-foot green area that goes out toward the school property. We're willing to dedicate that to the city as well, to be an access point for the students at the middle school there at Booth, who can access then the, the nature area to do their project adventures, or other science, or other type of projects they might want to do in that, in that natural area, that nature area. We also listened to the citizens, and, and we are, as Robin said, if you look at the, the street that's going from, going north from Spear Road, we had the road, the, the street, rather, all the way to the western end of that little kind of finger that points down, that connects to Spear. After listening to folks talk about it, and one of the neighbors talk about it at the planning commission meeting, we've moved that over. We're, we're suggesting twenty feet, only because the fifty feet then really impacts the, the across the street property. The twenty-foot, we're willing to dedicate that to the city so that it's city-owned property. And, you know, if it needs to be heavily landscaped or whatever, you know, that is fine, too. As Robin said, these homes are going to be large homes, priced at about a million dollars apiece. Currently, there is no such development going on in Peachtree City of this size. It's been a long, long time since houses of this size and this, this quality had been built in Peachtree City, and that's just a result of the, the town's pretty much built out. So again, we look at this as a very positive for the city. This property is going to develop, whether it develops here in Peachtree City or in the county. It will be, dirt will be being turned on this. And in the county, we believe that we'll have about the same number of homes. When my client purchased the property, it was future land use plan for one unit to two acres. The county, for some reason, has switched that to one unit to three acres, but we would present to the county and present our position that it should be honored that what was, what was purchased was the land use plan at that time. So in any event, about the number of acres being fifty-two, you're getting about the same number of homes, maybe one more, maybe one... of homes, maybe one more, maybe one less, or thereabouts, whether it's in a county or not. The advantage to it being in the city is we get those 12 acres of dedicated city or public-owned property that'll be accessible to the students at, at middle, at the middle school, or individuals, you know, that just want to walk like they do at Lion Creek. If it goes in the county, the way the county does development, it would not be public property, ends up being just privately owned. The, Robin had asked me what the red color was for some of the lots. Those are all one acre or less. The light yellow are the two acres, and so what we're submitting, what we're showing is there are several lots in the close vicinity of this property that is either of the same size or smaller, and so that we submit that this, the properties on, being submitted here, or being proposed here, are consistent with other properties in the area. But again, if you do the, the math where 12 acres is being taken away, then it really is even far better than that. The other improvements that we've made over the time, listening to folks and trying to be proactive in this and, and, and do what the citizens want, we've taken the access easements that took some places 50 feet over to the sides, to the boundaries of the property, taken those away. I believe what the folks who live along Carriage Lane and on Stagecoach, I always wanted to call that Spear, on Stagecoach, worried about possible future access to the county road, to Davis Road. With this development, we believe that actually blocks it, that, that the county, or the city, or somebody would have to exercise eminent domain, which I don't see happening, but I think this does as best as it can do to try and block any future connection to Davis Road. So in all of that, without rehashing all the details, I believe that we've reacted to what comments have been made, trying to be proactive, trying to be a, a good steward of the property here to develop it to Peachtree City standards, to make it an asset of the city, to give those 12 acres to the city so that a beautiful nature area can be now on our east side like we have on our west side. For all of that, we'd ask that it be annexed and zoned as requested. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we're doing a public hearing?
Yes.
All right. Uh, at this time, I'd like to see a show of hands of those who would like to speak in favor, just so I can get some idea. Show of hands? Can I see a show of hands of those who wish to speak in opposition? Okay, okay. Thank you. Um, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. I'd like to see, if you wish to speak in favor of the proposal, can you come to the microphone? Seeing none, if you wish to speak in opposition, please come to the microphone.
Suzanne Brown, I live in Crescent Oak. I want to speak primarily to the need to stop residential growth and stop stretching our city services to the breaking point. Residential development has issues with police, fire, EMS, and paving. The taxes you're going to collect from the property are never going to equal the amount of paving you're going to have to do in 10 years. Doesn't matter how many houses build in there, doesn't matter how many, what the property tax is going to be. It's not going to be enough. You're not going to bring in enough just to repave at one time in 10 years. We need industrial growth, not necessarily on this property, but we need industrial growth to offset the residential growth, and that's what we need. This property should be developed within the county guidelines, and somewhere down the road, if it gets annexed, that's fine, but this was turned down in 2010, 2020, and now it should be turned down in 2023. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next?
Yes, my name is Les Lumpkins. I live on Spear Road, and over the years, we've seen a lot of traffic on Spear Road in itself. We've had EMS, and they have to park out on Spear Road. My granddaughter goes to school, and the bus is there at 6:45 in the morning. Cars are behind the buses. I'm there at 2:30, between 2:30 and 3 o'clock, to meet the bus, and there's more traffic. People fly coming from Ebenezer Church going to Robinson Road, and to put another subdivision with a easement there, it's really not a safety factor at all. There's just too many, it's too much traffic in itself.
Thank you. Next?
Joseph Smith, Summit Walk. Same comment as before, as a taxpayer, this is going to increase costs to the city. It was mentioned about repaving the road. There's issues with the traffic. When Booth Middle School was put where it is, it's dramatically changed the traffic problems. It's get, at certain times of day, you can't even go up Robinson Road onto 54. And then, some people use Spear Road as an, an alternative, and now we're going to add more traffic there, so it's going to be a problem with traffic. Same comment about police and fire, with all the traffic problems, especially in the afternoons, it's going to be hard to get in there. And then again, that, what, what's going to be the extra cost for the city? Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Madam Mayor and council members, I'm Larry Manwaring, and I live in 307 Stagecoach Road. If your neighbor came to you and said, "I'm going to knock down my house, and I'm going to build three or four houses where my house now stands," what would your response be? Probably you can't do that, because there are zoning regulations that would prohibit it. Basically, that's what this request is. Most of this territory, despite that nifty map that had in red those areas that were in the, around there, most of the land that's around that area on Spear Road, and our side of, of Robinson, all the way down to Camp Creek, is ER, estate residential, three-to-five-acre residential estates. Most of this proposal is closer to one acre. So the density is three or four times as great. Now, sure, they're going to throw in the swampland and the creek, because it's no use to them. But did you notice there was a net, there was another chunk of land, some 13 acres, that they didn't say anything about hardly? That's divided into two sections, one six acres, another six acres. Those two sections are highlighted as ER on the proposal that's before you. Do you really think they'll develop those as ER? No way. Not when they're developing the other as one-acre residential estate. Why wouldn't they have these the same way? Either they're saving it for a school, elementary school, or they're saving it for some other kind of a development, multi-housing of some kind, stacked housing, whatever. It will pose a problem in the future, I promise you. So that's just two things here, two reasons to deny this request. One is it lacks compatibility with the surrounding areas. Two, it doesn't have transparency, because they're not telling you what they're going to do with that other chunk of land. Now, you have a chance here tonight to show that, hey, you really do, and I believe you do, you listened to what the citizens had to say. You listened very carefully, and this will give you a chance to show that you heard 100% of the students, uh, students, 100% of the citizens spoke up against this annexation. 100%. As did the planning, uh, the Planning Commission, 100%. They did, spoke up against it, not once, but twice. So here's a chance for you to honor the hard work of your planning commission and your citizens who have taken the time to come in here and pour their hearts out to you like I'm trying to. And it'll also be a chance for you to show, hey, we follow the plan. We follow the master plan, and we're committed to following those regulations. Now, I really don't think, if your neighbor wanted to tear down his house and build new houses three or four times as many, that you'd be in favor of that, and I hope you're not in favor of it for in my neighborhood. Now, some would say, hey, we need to adopt this, go along with it so we can control it. Well, to that I say, if you annex this, you've already lost the problem. You've lost the battle. So I urge you to do what's in the best interest of the citizens of this great city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Bob Grove, Leekside. Mine's just going to be not on the size of the house, size of the property, it's going to be on traffic and the safety of the area. I work traffic along with a couple team members here for the school system from 7:00 AM to 8:30. That's every, five days a week. In the afternoon, we do it from 2:00 to 4:00, five days a week. You start building those houses back there, what are you going to do with all the construction equipment? They're not going to use Stagecoach, and I didn't see up there, on there, that, last time we were here, talked about it, it was going to tie into a golf cart path only. If you go up to a road cut in off of Spear, which is a nightmare, off of Robinson, which is a nightmare, you're going to start off with the first houses till the finished houses, and you're going to be running all type of equipment up there. People get moved in, and you got all the cars coming back out again. In the afternoons, well, actually during morning and afternoons, AM and PM operations, one of my fellows that works at Robinson and Stagecoach have to take fire and police and escort them down the opposite lane of traffic to answer their calls if they're running emergency, just to get to 54. What are you going to do if you start tacking more in there? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Sure. Take that microphone and take that microphone, and we'll hear from you both.
Hi, I'm Karen McKernan. I'm in Whitfield Farms. I'm around the corner from Spear Road. I'm not sure it's even worth talking to you guys, because it just seems like you're accepting this. It's scary. It's very scary. It looks on the map, with my dumb eyes, that I don't understand all these things, that you're crowding out Booth already. You had to move Booth because you couldn't go anywhere else with the old, original Booth, and it looks like the stadium is right on property that's going to be developed, and I just don't understand that. I had always understood this to be a green space area, that nobody would develop in there. People on Spear Road would be okay, and, and along Robinson Road, everybody would be okay, and no developing would be down there because it was such a preserve area, it was a, a water area, and there's trees, and we've already taken down so many trees in that area. I'm a tree hugger, I'm an environmental person. What's it going to do to our weather systems in the future if we keep tearing things out? The septic system, they're talking about the septic system still. Why do we have the septic system where they need to have sewage come in to take out the waste products? This is a sensitive area, but why not just build? Take it all out, just ruin it all? I don't understand it. Also, I'm on Spear Road all the time. It is a windy, narrow road. I love it. I, when I get on it, it, even though it's windy and small, it relaxes me. I love it, and just where the sign is that says, oh, by the way, there's going to be this meeting about, you know, this property, and it's on Spear Road.
Your time has expired. Thank you for your comment.
I've tried to stop there to read the sign, and I almost get reared in every time. That means, and it's on a curve, there's a lot of traffic that you can't see either way, and I can't see golf carts coming out there. As it is, if there is a golf cart on Spear Road, it's scary to watch them, and it's, you're going to have to recreate Spear Road. And also, I think that they've already did some replanning.
I'm going to, I'm going to stop you right there, since we ran out of time. Counsel, stay where you are. Counsel, we had one more person, I believe, who wished to speak. Do you want to tack on a motion?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we extend the time five minutes for each side.
A second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Please continue.
And the other thing is, I saw some people measuring the road across Robinson Road from Whitfield Farms, and I, and what is this for? It's for a cart path. And I'm going, but there's, there's a golf, golf cart path on the east side. Why would you be putting one on the west side? What, what's going on that we're doing this, and then we're doing this, and then we have to redo, and that may just be a rumor, but when you put in the golf cart path on Robinson Road, we yelled and said, no, it's not safe, it won't be safe for kids to cross the road. Now it's, I don't understand what's going on. It's just, you say one thing, and then it just doesn't seem to help to say anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Madam Mayor and City Council, my name is Bill, Bill Fuller, and I live at 209 Spear Road. With the latest application for annexation of the 52-acre tract, my property would be the most affected. The, the proposed new main entrance and exit road for this development is just a few feet from my own entrance, and runs the full length, parallel to and within feet of my drive. I have concerns about the amount of traffic that would be using the proposed thoroughfare and spilling into Spear Road, especially when most households will have at least two vehicles. I've lived at Spear Road for 30 years, having selected a 3.5-acre lot to try and ensure peace and privacy. Within the time, within the time of my purchase, the minimum lot size was two acres. The county require a minimum of three acres for this area. Indeed, Platinum Ridge, which always seems to be ignored, is a, a, a development directly across the street from, from my property. It has a minimum of five-acre lots. So in keeping with the surrounding area and county standards, I feel each of the proposed homes should be at least on three acres. Even at that, I still have concerns about the number of septic tanks, and of course, access to Spear Road. The Peachtree City Planning Commission has, with good reason, already twice denied this application. I side with them and would respectfully ask the city council to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening, council, mayor. My name is Aaron Polish. I'm a new, a new resident here on 215 Spear Road, which is right next to Bill, and we almost share driveway, entrance and exit. And I come from a big city, don't hold judgment, and one thing I notice is that life is a little bit slower here, which is a nice thing. But when I drive down Spear Road, I have two little children, five years old and seven years old, and I slow down to turn into my driveway. I'm either almost rear-ended, or someone is closely tailgating behind me, and I, when I come out, I see cars, I think the speed limit is 35, and then when you get into the Peachtree County line, it goes down to 30. I'm always telling my wife, slow down, slow down. Don't want to get any tickets. So we drop down to 35 from 38. So I constantly see cars flying down Spear Road, and I'm new here. I didn't even know about this annexation. Uh, we closed on August 28th, so I wanted to come and see what this was all about. So not only is the speed very excessive on that Spear Road, there's also a bend right before our driveways. I don't think people can really see what's going on. And also, the, the entrance- And also, the entrance and exit is literally going to be right by our driveways. And one of the reasons I chose that house, I looked for over a year, was because of the solitude away from any big roads, any excess traffic. So now, when I saw this plan, it kind of put a little damper on my whole plan for aging here with my family. So I hope you'll consider denying this for the future safety of, of a lot of the community members here in this area.
Your time has expired.
And I thank you very much for my time.
Thank you. Was there, we tacked on five minutes to the opposition. Was there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Sir?
Um, is that, that was the five minutes? Correct. Mayor, that was the additional five minutes?
For the opposition?
Correct.
But we didn't have the five minutes for the in favor?
In favor? Okay.
Correct.
At the same moment on log move, I wasn't going to speak, but thanks for extending it. And I think there's some comments made about 100% of the Peachtree City residents have opposed this, but if you remember, I've spoke for it previously in the Planning Commission as well as the council meetings in the past. I just want to say that this, again, reiterating, is going to get built, whether it's in Fayette County or in Peachtree City. So all the concerns that we all have about traffic, either they could get a lot worse if we were to go the first plan where the majority of the houses are coming from Stagecoach Road, and then there's no connection on Spear Road. So there's a lot of concern with traffic, with the school being right there, and that makes sense. And with the new plan that they have come up with going from Spear Road, that alleviates majority of the traffic. Understand there's some issues still, but again, it's going to get built. There's just not going to be trees there forever. And if it gets built in Peachtree City, at least we have the chance of approving it with it being from Spear Road and molding it the way it needs to be according to Peachtree City standards. I like the fact that we finally get an opportunity, if it gets approved, to have a house that's on a larger acre lot. We haven't seen that in the past decade, maybe, where we have in Peachtree City to be able to build on greater than an acre of land. Everything gets built so close by to each other now. All the new developments like that, there's just not any more land in Peachtree City to build on that requires, that has enough acreage. So that's what I had to say about the approving. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to, excuse me, excuse me. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Hearing none, I hereby close the public hearing. Counsel? Mr. King, are you still with us?
Oh, yeah. I'm, I'm not asleep.
Not yet.
At least not yet.
You want to kick this off?
Yeah. Let me, let me start with a couple of facts here. Number one, the, the development as it now stands, whether it's a little change from the number of houses, which would be few, to a couple more to the west, is really not the fact here, not the, not the primary issue. The primary issue is the traffic that would go on to Stagecoach. Because if this development is, is not approved, then we lose the capability potentially of controlling that side of our border. Because if it's approved as the, as the property owner has said in the county, then the cart path on the, just to the east of where pave, where the pavement stops on Stagecoach, back into it, that won't be a cart path. That'll be a street. And that street will funnel everything onto Stagecoach, which, which is the primary objection I hear to this say. And, and just, just as another little fact that, that a lot of people need to understand, to the east of the Hyde property as well, in excess of 100 acres of undeveloped Fayette County property, that's going to get developed. And if you allow the first portion of it to come in as county, to a county development, then you have absolutely no control over that larger development that'll follow, which, which again, will funnel substantially more traffic onto Stagecoach, which is going to cost a heck of a lot more to keep Stagecoach in repair and provide undue strain on the Carriage Lane intersection that is already out of whack, and that's due to the school board through two or three years ago. So I, I would have to say yes to this for the very simple reason, I now control that side of my border, and regardless of what is approved by the county further east, that's their business.
Thank you, sir.
Where I stand.
Thank you. Counsel? Anybody else? Mr. Prebor?
So I already know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask Robin Coyu to comment on what the county said. If it goes to the county, they will do with Stagecoach.
When we asked for, through the annexation process, the county has the opportunity to comment, and their staff, their county engineer was anxious to get a connection from Stagecoach all the way out to Davis Road in the long-term future. And so they had hoped that the staff conditions would require that kind of design so that that future road connection could be made.
So, so everybody understands, Stagecoach used to go from Robinson to Ebenezer. There's still a roadbed there. The county, if we don't annex it, and it goes to the county, and then whatever they go for, the county can say, you know what? You need to leave that open so we can make that a collector road all the way to Ebenezer. And you talk about on Carriage Lane, you talk about the cut-through traffic that's going to come from those hundreds of acres into Carriage Lane to get to Publix, to get to wherever, that's a lot of, that's a lot of cut-through traffic. That's what Mike was talking about when he said that. I have some other comments. I won't spend as long on them. One of the things, if we do annex it, it benefits, is a cart path to Publix. We've tried to make interconnectivity. Right now, the only way to get to Publix is if you go down by McDonald's, up, over, and then you can cross over 54 at Lexington. This makes it so we have an opportunity to go around the backside for the cart paths. The homes are a million dollars apiece. We know the break even is 570. I know there's, there's some challenge to that, but that's what we, we've used as a guideline for at least the recent years. Just as a point of information, the school board put the school there, not us. The school board is the one that bought a house and tore it down, not us, so that people can cut through to get the Carriage Lane. If we don't annex it, we're not going to stop, we're not going to stop the houses from being built. We're not going to stop the traffic. It's still going to happen. It's a matter of, do we want that traffic on Stagecoach or Spear? And the, the way this is designed, it goes to Spear. I do have a couple of questions for the, for the applicant.
Certainly.
One of the concerns is the, the two lots at six acres and potential for a school buying it, or, so, you know, how, how can we address that? And also, another one, Mr. Lindsey, the, the city requested a 50-foot buffer, and you have a 20-foot buffer, so.
Right. Well, the two lots that are ER, they're going to be zoned, the request is to bring those in ER, not leave them AR for some possible unknown future use. No, it's a state residential. There is no discussion going on with the school board about the purchase of the property. I don't know where that's coming from. Now, could the school come in and condemn? Yeah, they can condemn any property. They have eminent domain power, just like you guys do. But far as I know, that's no discussion what's, by the school board going on, but we are not having any discussions with them at all. So I don't know where this is coming from. So it's not true.
Would you, would you be amenable to some kind of a deed restriction that assures it remains residential?
Sure. That's not a problem.
Those two lots?
Right. That's not a problem. But understand, and I'm sure Ted confirmed this, you know, if the school board wanted to come take over all of Carriage Lane, whatever, they have the right to do that. So we can put a deed restriction in, but that doesn't, you know, stop the school board.
That's a good point. So even with a deed restriction?
Yeah, the Board of Education can exercise eminent domain powers to acquire. Now, building roads is not something that typically a school board does, but in terms of using the parcels for an educational purpose or as part of school system property, yeah, they could do that. What you'd be doing with a deed restriction is at least trying to prevent a arms-length transaction where it was sold to the school board.
Would you be agreeable to that?
Yeah, that's totally fine. And then the 50-foot, 20-foot difference, Phil, the 50 feet pushes that road so far over, it crams in, it's going to put a house right on the road. That's why we would ask for 20-foot or 20 feet, the dedicated buffer on the west side there, that little finger, as I call it, going down towards Spear. That's the reason for the 20 as opposed to 50. But we do understand the concern of the neighbors there, so we're wanting to push that over and willing to do that. If you recall, the earlier plan had the street, the right-of-way, right up. Now, and also understand that when you have the 20-foot, that's going to be addition to the right-of-way. The right-of-way is, Robin, how much is it for?
50 minimum.
15?
50.
50, is what I thought. And then the, the road's about, what, 20?
24, curb-to-curb.
Yeah, so you're going to have 20 feet plus half of what are the differences. So probably 30, 35 feet, something like that. Nothing be built on it? If that helps.
I, I got to tell you, I, I really do want to talk while you're here about maintaining this. What, what's the worst that could happen if we decide? We need to keep that as a condition, that 50-foot.
The 50-foot as opposed to 20?
Correct.
If Michael can.
Thanks.
The simple answer is if it were more than 20 feet, the new, I don't want to put the map back up there, the new lot that we're doing, Lot 1, if you move it 50 feet, the new house will be closer to the road than Mr. Fuller's house. So if, if, if he needs to be 100 feet away, then we're putting his new house for a new Peachtree City citizen that's going to be 75 feet away, roughly. So, I mean, putting it at 20 feet would make it where our new house, like, I'm not, I'm not asking him to do anything that, that I wouldn't do if I were going to live in that house and the new person that's going to build that. I mean, that's just a very equitable solution. If the city requires it to be 50 feet, we're amenable to that. I just, I don't, I don't agree with it, but.
There's a repercussion then on the other side.
Yeah.
I understand. Okay, thank you. Mr. Prebor?
You know, I'm finished with my comments. Again, the biggest ones are, they're going to build something. It's going to go in there. It's not going to remain green space, and unfortunately, that's, it's the way of the world. That's it. No further comment.
Thank you. Mr. DiStadio?
I might have, well, have been a potted plant because everything that Phil said was, I was, have written down, he said. Normally, I would not have been in favor of this, but Phil's kind of talked me into it, to be honest with you. It's going to be developed. I was very interested in Lot 1 and Lot 2 because we've gotten a lot of emails along that. On one of the drawings, it shows Lot 1 and 2. Another one, it's, it just calls them.
You talking about the big lots?
Yeah.
22 and 23?
Yeah, well, on this one, it shows it 1 and 2, but either one of the two you're talking about.
Up here. Yeah.
But, you know, as long as there's some, some sort of control that they can't build on that, whether it be another school or build something else, I'm agreeable to that.
So, so the applicant has agreed to put a deed restriction on that calls for residential? It just provides a little bit of a buffer should the school system decide to come in. But school system?
I understand.
Yeah.
They can take it if they want to take it.
Yes.
But at least we have, we tried to have some control over it.
Yes.
And I do agree that we ought, we ought to stick with the 50-foot buffer. So with those two things, I would say yes.
Thank you. Mr. Holland?
Mr. Lindsey, could you step up there again? Would you, would you be willing for this, for these properties to make them all ER? No. We've got a plan submitted for ER. I know what you've got planned. Yeah, and ER, but no, that's not. That keeps in, keeps it in the same as all the other properties or many of the other properties around that area, correct? It's to keep it, keep it in the ER zoning. That's point number one. Point number two is, that's an environmentally sensitive area. I would think that you would want to put sewers in there and put a lift station in there, connect it on to, I guess it would be going to Robinson Road. Are you amenable to that? The, the problem there, Clint, is that the sewer ends way up on the other side of the school property. The original plan was that the school was going to bring it down closer to our property. We had designed to have a lift station so that the sewer could connect there to where the sewer was going to end on the school's property. Unfortunately, the way it eventually got designed and developed, the sewer is way up close, much closer to Robinson Road. Yeah, I know it's up in Robinson Road. I do know that. So it makes it where we just can't do it from the house. It's just more costly to, to put it in there. I, I get it. It's a matter of money. It's not a matter, you can't do it. It's a matter of money. Well, it makes it economically not feasible. I mean, it's not making more money. It becomes, there's a break-even point, and it's just too far away, unfortunately. And, you know, again, we're back to density issues, and the density issues, Madam Mayor, is supposed to be at the edge of the city. It should be the highest, the lowest density. And here we are now going to roughly one acre lots, maybe a little bit more, one acre lots. I believe that we have our own ordinance that says should be two acre lots minimum, if I correct that. And maybe, Ms. Cal, can you address that? At the edge of the city, should it be two acre lots?
We don't have an ordinance that says that.
Okay, or land plan. I'm sorry. Maybe I'm using the wrong, wrong words.
In that area? Yes, sir. It's for, one acre or larger is the, is the largest density category we have in our future land use plan.
So basically, we've got an issue with the ER zoning that's been rejected. I heard you say that. The sewers have been rejected. The density has been rejected. And, let's see, land plan, you're not, if I'm understanding this right, Madam Mayor, they're, they're not following the land plan as was just laid out.
Well, I think we just talked about one acre lots are indicated for this area.
Yeah, anything larger than one acre.
Okay. Last but not least is the safety issues. The safety issue of that traffic going out on Spear Road with the speed limits at 35, and it seems to me that that's a, a serious issue for the owners there coming in and out of their properties, and they are our citizens that are doing that.
On Stagecoach?
No, on Spear, okay? And that's where the exit's going to be. It's going to be on Spear Road. So I've, I see too many negatives on this, and for that reason, I will not be in favor of this.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I, I know the upshot from the Planning Commission was denial because this isn't in our annexation plan. It's just not in the border study, and that's true. It isn't. So we'll be tackling a new border study. It just wasn't addressed before, and I don't know why. So we'll be tackling a new border study and an annexation plan, I think, in the coming months. And, yeah, I think this annexation is the only thing that protects the Stagecoach Road and the Carriage Lane Road neighbors from the traffic headaches that would come, that would be inevitable if this is developed in the county. And again, to your point, Mr. Prebor, it's going to be developed. Do we want to see it developed in Peachtree City where we have controls and we can apply the R-43 setback requirements? Or do we want to let the county make all those decisions? And I'm in favor of the city having some control and making those decisions. So with that, can I get a motion?
Do we want to get, did we get something from Mike?
Mike commented first. Is there anything you want to add, Mr. King?
No, I think, I think it's been covered.
Okay.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
Would you like a motion?
You going to make a micro, Mayor?
The Mayor, Madam Mayor, I'd move that we approve agenda at the public hearing 122303, the annexation and rezoning for 52 acres located on Stagecoach Road and Spear Road from AR in Incorporated Fayette County. and Spear Road from AR in Incorporated Fayette County to ER and LUR in Peachtree City with the conditions specified.
There are eight conditions. I'll make a clarification, Mr. King. There are eight conditions specified in the packet.
That is correct.
Which are now, which are now nine that will put that residential deed, deed restriction on as discussed.
Do you need the motion done again?
No, I just need you to clarify, per the nine.
It would have to include the nine conditions as specified.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Public hearing 122304, New Alcohol License, Rockaway Development LLC, 1211 Highway 74 South.
There's a different protocol for this matter. When the public hearing is open, members of council will become hearers. No action in their part is in order until the mayor declares the hearing complete. First, city staff will present the item. The mayor will then allow a total of ten minutes for members of the public to comment. No individual member of the public will be given more than five minutes to speak. Time limits may only be extended by a majority vote of council. Prior to closing the public hearing, city staff and the public will be given the opportunity to ask questions. When the mayor is assured that input is complete, the public hearing shall be ended, and council may then debate the issue and render a decision. All speakers from the public are asked to follow these rules. First, please wait to be recognized by the mayor. Two, come to the microphone and state your name and neighborhood prior to making remarks. Three, keep individual remarks under five minutes. And please do not repeat others' comments. And four, address all comments to the mayor. Alrighty. So Mayor and Council, this is an alcohol license, which routinely comes in front of the Mayor and Council. Um, this location is on the corner of Rockaway Road and 74. The applicant has applied his, the name is Mr. De Yanni, has applied to serve as the licensee and the license rep for this Rockaway Development at 1211 Highway 74 South. When researching the information, when the application comes in, we do have to take a look at multiple different requirements. One requirement in particular is the distance. There are city ordinances that have distance requirements regarding churches, school, alcohol treatment centers. And then there is a state law that also has a requirement of distances. It's not specifically listed in the city ordinance, but as you will see in your packet, as well as in this presentation, that the state law does not allow municipalities to authorize any new retail package stores located within five hundred yards of another existing retail package store that sells distilled spirits. There is already a package store located three hundred and nine yards away from this location, which is the Peachtree Bottle Shop. So based on this requirement from the state law, the distance does not meet the requirement for the location. Additionally, we do also have to take a look at the applicant. In this case, the requirement, well, in all cases, the requirement is that the application is submitted to the police chief to receive a certificate which states that the applicant meets the requirements. The police chief has done the investigation and has determined the applicant also does not meet the requirements of our code in order to be issued a license. So with that, the staff recommendation is to deny the issuance of the alcohol license to the applicant, which will also include the location at 1211 Highway 74, based on the findings of the application process.
Thank you. With that, I will open the public hearing. All those who wish to speak in favor, please take the microphone. All those who wish to speak in opposition. Seeing none, I hereby close the public hearing. Counsel?
I think it's pretty straightforward, Madam Mayor. It's five hundred yards, and it appears it's three hundred and nine yards. And that's a state law. If I understand that right?
That's correct.
And for that, a very simple fact, I'm not in favor.
Any other comments before we get a motion? Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we deny this.
That's all you need, motion to deny?
Okay, motion to deny item 12-2304, New Alcohol License, Rockaway Development, 1211 Highway 74 South.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of the denial, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Council staff topics. Uh, this is to announce that in keeping with our customary December calendar, there will be no December 21st, 2023 city council meeting. So back to the last meeting for council members, Prebor and King. Are there any other council staff topics? Sir?
I, I have one, Madam Mayor. I just want to make sure, since this is our last one, that I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. We'll see you next year. And for those that are of the Jewish faith, today is Hanukkah's first day. So happy Hanukkah to our Jewish residents.
With a menorah lighting coming up Sunday afternoon at Drake Field.
Excellent.
All right. Uh, do we have executive session?
No, Mayor, we do not.
I would like to comment and thank the people that ran to, to be elected. And congratulations to those persons that won. And, uh, and we appreciate you stepping up. Thank you.
Amen to that.
All right. Executive session? None? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, anybody?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We stand adjourned. Good night, Mr. King. Take good care.
Good night, all.